Welcome everyone to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday. March twenty second, two thousand twenty-two. We'll call the meeting to order. Uh, we'll approve the council agenda and then the agenda additions or corrections.
Uh, Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, invocation River of Hope Church.
Great, yes, Pastor Hans Peterson at River of Hope, grateful to be with you here this evening. And I'm thinking, last week was Saint Patrick's Day, so I'm thinking about this prayer that was attributed to Saint Patrick, Saint Patrick's Rest Plate. A friend of mine, uh, Richard Brooksford Culligan, had set a tune to this, I thought this would be a way, sing this, uh, to center ourselves now. Uh, Saint Patrick was Christian, my perspective as well, so the prayer he has is, uh, Christ be beside me, within me, but you could, you know, depending on your faith tradition, you could say, God be above me, but, you know, behind me, in front of me, you could say, love, love be in the ears of all who hear me, love be in the eyes of all who see me. Um, I know sometimes I get a little bit tripped up and thinking about worrying about the future or fretting about the past, but sometimes I think one of the great things of our faith, faith traditions is to center us into the now and recognize the love in life that's present for us here in our work and our relationships and our meeting, so this is, oh, Christ, surround me. God be the love to search and keep me. God be the prayer to move my voice. God be the strength to now uphold me. Oh, Christ, surround me. Oh, Christ, surround me. Bind to myself the name of holy. Great cloud of witnesses enfold prophets, apostles, angels witness. Oh, Christ, surround me. Oh, Christ, surround me. Simple little prayer, feel free to sing along if you'd like. The brightness of sun and glow of moonlight. Flashing of lightning, strength of wind. Depth of the sea to soil of planet. Oh, Christ, surround me. Oh, Christ, surround me. Walking beside to him my journey. Going ahead to light my way. And from beneath above, and always Yahweh. Yahweh surround me. Yahweh surround me. Love in the eyes of all who see me. Love in the ears that hear my voice. Love in the hearts of all who know me. Oh, love, oh, love, surround me. Oh, love, surround me. Christ, oh, Christ, surround me. Oh, Christ, surround me. May love be in our thoughts and our doings and with us here as you meet tonight. Amen. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anyone have anything tonight? Are you ready? Uh, public comment, citizens addressing the council, please come forward and speak your name and address. Harry, the approval of minutes, uh, we have the regular meeting minutes of March eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
People are just fighting over it tonight, so.
Boy, that's what else. Mary and Chad, or was it Dave?
Probably Dave.
Dave?
Okay. It works either way.
Alright. Well, hey, Mary, second by Dave to approve the regular meeting minutes of March eighth.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, uh, consent agenda, this one will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is, uh, approval of the professional service agreement with AE two S incorporate for wastewater treatment facility headwork programming. B is approval of agreement with the McLeod County for the armor radio. C is approval of issuing, uh, temporary liquor license to the Hutchinson Center for the Arts on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. D is approval of a non waiver of tort liability limits for general liability. E is approval of items for Truck Highway fifteen trail improvements, letting number three, project number twenty-two dash three. And under there, we have two resolutions, a resolution number one, five, four, three, one. Resolution ordering, preparation of report on improvements, and resolution number one, five, four, three, two. Resolution receiving reports and calling for hearings on improvement. F is approval of items for bridge rehabilitation limit. Letting number ten, project number twenty-two dash ten. We have two resolutions under there. Resolution number one, five, four, three, three, resolution ordering preparation of report on improvements. And resolution number one, five, four, three, four, resolution receiving report and calling for hearings on improvements. G is approval of resolution number one, five, four, three, five. Resolution closing of the two thousand eighteen construction fund to the two thousand nineteen construction fund. And H is claims appropriation contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
Yes, I'd like to see D pulled off at the moment. I'd like to have that explained to the public exactly what that is.
Which one?
D, D consideration of, uh, non approval.
Okay, and I'd like E pulled off.
Make a motion to approve the balance. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the balance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, uh, Andy?
Mark, are you ready?
Mark.
Andy?
Sure, so basically, what's being announced to you tonight is, um, our insurance company, the Minnesota League of Cities Insurance Trust, um, requires this as part of our policy with them, that every year the city needs to decide whether it's going to, um, limit, uh, claims that can be made against the city up to one point five million dollars or allow claims in excess of one point five million dollars to occur. Um, of course, we don't want that, the statutory limit for claims against all municipalities is one point five million dollars. But for some reason, as part of our policy with the League of Cities, they need us to reaffirm that every year. And so the recommendation, um, that's being made is that we do not, um, waive the tort liability limits of one point five million dollars. If we weren't to do that, um, we would be opening ourselves up to claims in excess of one point five million dollars. So the worst of the worst happens, um, you know, we could be sued and held liable for many times that amount. Obviously, we don't want that to happen. And as part of our insurance policy, we need to say we don't want that to happen, which is why we're asking you not to waive those limits.
Is this pretty much done through all municipalities in the state?
Yes, it is.
This is twenty years of, of being in this role, and I've had to do it every year.
And anybody who's insured through the league has to do this, the utilities did it last month at their meeting as well.
It protects the city.
Correct.
You'd have an unlimited amount of.
Right.
Liability.
Very good, thank you. I make a motion to, uh, approve that.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Mary to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, I just pulled the E off, cause I, uh, for the trail improvement, uh, but the way times are now and stuff, I think that, uh, we should probably hold off on spending this kind of money for, for the trail, but that's just my feeling on it. I don't know what everybody else feels.
Mayor, it should be noted, it's, it's in the estimate. Basically, we're, we're getting state funds to do this work, for a grant, that's been allocated for a number of years now. So, I, I did show some bonding dollars to cover our fees, uh, that we applied to every project, that obviously the, the state dollars won't cover those, uh, but we're estimating about two hundred, just over two hundred thousand in construction dollars. Those would be, our understanding right now would be entirely covered by the state grant. Uh, this is the grant, we, we've spoken about a number of times, initially included also sidewalk work along Highway seven on the north side that we, we moved away from due to some of the expectations of the state to install that facility. So now it is just the trail improvements along the, uh, westerly side of Highway fifteen between, uh, Linden and Grove. Uh, the pad ramps are installed, that were installed as part of that, the highway project back in twenty twenty, so. Yeah, probably it's, uh, like I showed in the estimated, uh, construction project estimate, you know, eighty percent of it would be covered by the state, and that's, that's only if we, you know, utilize bonding dollars, uh, to cover the fees, we might not even apply the fees, so like, very well, could be a hundred percent funded by state dollars.
So the two oh two is the state funding and the forty-seven thousand five hundred is the bonding, the way you've got it?
Yep, and we may utilize bonding dollars. We may not, you know, it's a conversation between Andy and myself as we formalize the entire infrastructure improvement program at the end of the year.
Actually, under four twenty-nine bonds, we could use it for the trail, but with four seventy-five bonds, we can't. Unless there's some public safety concerns or factors to it, so.
So really, it's, we would cover basically the construction costs with the grant, and really, in the end, we won't be utilizing.
We charge out fees through the other.
Projects, yeah, no, that's the surface of this one.
Right.
Yeah. So in a nutshell, it'd be a hundred percent state dollars, is our understanding at this point in time.
I would make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Do not have a public hearing, uh, presentation by new mayor on fiber optics project.
Good afternoon, I'm Richard Gaddy, I'm the director of sales for Newberry, and I am also a federal block manager. So, thank you for making the time for us this afternoon. We want to go over, uh, to give you kind of a snapshot of what our, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four, uh, fiber projects are gonna look like, uh, for the city of Hutchinson moving forward. Um, it's gonna be considerable. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so it, it is, it is a project, um, that we have been working at for years, and speaking of, uh, state grants, uh, we are, have a federal and state grants that, uh, that we will, uh, take a look at. Um, a little bit about us, um, this is, uh, you know, we're, we're a local company, we're in your communities, we are, you know, we're in your churches, we're in your softball leagues, uh, we are integrated into the community. Even to the point to where in our industry right now, it is very uncommon to have retail outlets, in other words, a place you can actually walk in, pay your bill, put some products, and talk to us about our products and services. And we have them at every location that we are in. Our executives are very active in, in their, in their own communities, um, those are the three, Glenn, uh, Barb, and Kurt. And of course, we're headquartered out of New Ulm, Minnesota. We're a smaller company, we're two hundred and fifteen employees, we have eleven, uh, locations, uh, throughout Minnesota, and one in Northern Iowa, in Aralia, Iowa. Uh, we serve over seventy thousand voice, uh, data and internet connections, and, um, the, uh, the, the ownership, uh, is totally on Minnesota. The stakeholders, this is kind of, you know, our mission statement, we have, uh, new very customers, we serve people throughout, uh, the southern southwest part, part of the state, uh, like I said, we are in your communities, um, and one of the things that we've been talking a lot about, it's kind of a buzzword in our industry actually, is gig cities. Uh, when we complete this project, uh, this will be a gig city. So what does that mean? Does that, that means you will have gig speeds all the way into your communities? And as we get into looking at this, you'll be, you'll be able to see our penetration areas and the areas that we're gonna go at. Those are the maps that we, we handed out, um, that, uh, that Chris, uh, was good enough to print up today. Um, so those, those are the things that will, you know, will give you a better idea after today, uh, you know, when you see us digging up your wants, you know, what we're doing out there. Um, our stakeholders are, are, are many, um, and we're, the kind of the unique thing about that is, is that we're, we're a smaller company, we're sixty-five million dollars. Um, and we are, um, we're real, really focused on, um, the communities, the communities we serve, we are over ninety-nine percent rural in our penetration. Kind of the interesting thing about this slide is, is that is in the, you know, is in the lower right-hand corner here, which is the capital investment areas. The, the, the capital invested in historically, uh, that we look at in the industry, this would be your AT&amp;Ts, your Horizons, Century Links, the, the large companies, the large, the big carriers. The annual, uh, spend in back into putting fiber back into the ground is approximately fifteen to twenty percent. What we have done over the last few years, starting last year, is, is that, you know, we had, we, we doubled that, we basically said, we're not gonna put in fifteen, we're gonna put in a third. We, we put in thirty percent last year, this year, in twenty twenty-two, we are going to put in sixty percent, now that's sixty percent of our revenue. So we're putting a lot of fiber back into the ground. And in twenty twenty-three, we're gonna continue that movement, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, the world would be fifty and fifty percent more. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, we're a sixty-five million dollar company, that's small, um, kind of the small medium range. And we are putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of fiber into the ground for the next two to three years, so it's a considerable effort. Um, a lot of companies will talk about, um, you know, the, the, kind of the, the wireless technology that you'll hear. Um, they, they, kind of the industry term is fixed wireless, uh, that is, that's an interim solution for us, we have fixed wireless right here, where we can get into some areas that traditionally do not have high density. In other words, they don't have a lot of people, but they need service and they need faster speeds. Our solution is, is that we use fixed wireless to be able to serve those communities and those residents. In the, when, when we're moving forward, the thing that we look at very tightly is, is that we look at density. How many people are signed up for our service? We do not just put the final solution of fixed wireless, our fixed, our final solution is fiber. Cause that really is the gold standard within the, within the industry. The things that we're looking at right now are future-proofing networks throughout the communities. What does that mean? That means, two years ago, the average device usage within your homes was eight. Recent survey that came out, uh, in this, this year is, is that that is up to twelve. So if you look in your own house and your own, in, in, in your usage, your cell phones, your TVs, streaming, Google, um, Fire TV. All of those take bandwidth, and it's really, really different, because what it is, it is symmetrical speeds, and what that is, is that it's as fast coming down as it is going up. Five years ago, three years ago, was not a big deal, but now it is, because of all those streaming services are consuming huge amounts of bandwidth. And that's why we look at very seriously at future proofing. One of the things that we put a lot of time and effort into is not making, making sure our pricing was consistent. Now, this is residential pricing, um, so if you own a business and, uh, you look at here and think, I'm getting gig for a hundred and twenty-five, you have to go to your home to be able to get that, you can't get it into the business right now. And the fees are gonna be consistent, there are no promotional fees, so if your bill is going to be a hundred dollars for five hundred meg, and you get that, and you have a, a, a term on that, it generally runs from six to a year, after that, it automatically will go up, you have to call in, you have to be able to get that adjusted. Luckily, hopefully, you'll be able to get a rebate on maybe your overages and stuff that you, that you put forward that has costs, but that, that's, that's a hassle. So what we've done is we eliminated that and said, this is the price, we're gonna stick with it, no promotional prices, we're never going to change it. Uh, there's a lot of federal program out there right now, you know, what, what, you know, the, the reality, the world we're living in right now with COVID, uh, is, is that it has put a huge strain on bandwidth, and there's a lot of federal programs that we participated in, actually, right here in Hutchinson, to be able to get school, when they went to, from, from school classroom to work from home. Uh, that put a lot of demand on the residential, uh, uh, market that we were ahead of, that we addressed it, and we were ahead of it, so there's not too many people in Hutchinson right now that can say, hey, we didn't have enough bandwidth to do our homework, or kids didn't have to sit in McDonald's parking lot to be able to get things done, and we're gonna continue with that. Your community thrives with strong connections, one of the things that we're finding in that is, is that behind real estate generally, the number two thing that we have, that we've, and we've deal with a lot of communities right now on this subject is, it's either one or two, broadband DSL is either the first or the second thing behind or ahead of real estate, and why do you go to a community? Infrastructure, they wanna know that they, we've got enough bandwidth to run their businesses. And we do, we're working very tightly, we work very tightly with you as a community, we are putting conduit in trenches when they open up, even though if we're not putting fiber in, we know it's there, and we'll continue to take that approach. It is a competitive advantage to be able to attract business into your business park, into your industrial parks. To be able to say that you have the infrastructure to be able to support their business. That internally will be a big decision point, a big, a big decision point if they relocate to your community or they come to your community. The other thing of it is, is that, one of the things that we have seen is, is that within our, within our company, one of the things that we have done with installing all of this fiber in a very short period of time, is created job opportunities within our own company. The trick here is finding people to be able to fill those jobs. And for those of you with business, you know exactly what I mean, attracting talent right now, is, uh, is, uh, a job in itself, I'll just leave it at that. Um, so, one of the other things too is, is that again, we have local teams, we're here, um, you don't have to, you know, there's not a repair work coming out of the cities, there's not, you know, it's all here, it's all local, we have warehouses, we have equipment, we have supplies, and we have people, uh, right here locally. This is a little bit of, 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 a little bit of technical stuff, but I, I won't, I won't bore you with a lot of the, the, um, a lot of the message here, I think probably, is, is that is the construction of the network. It is, we are a tier one, what we call a tier one operator, and what that means is, is that we have done, we, we put all of our fiber in with specifications that are adhered to by, by, you know, the big three basically, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and CenturyLink. We adhere, adhere to those same specifications. So when we're putting fiber in the ground, it will handle the traffic now and in the future. And it, it, it really, you know, when we, when we do this, what it does is that it really, it lessens the, the the stress on the network itself, because we can spread out, you know, the, the bandwidth availability. Kind of one of the interesting things here is the, the Netflix, Google, and Facebook. Um, we host all of that locally, right here in Hutchinson, in our offices, a couple of blocks from here, that's hosted here locally. That's unique, and that was a design, uh, by a gentleman called Anthony Andenberg, who's on our staff. And what he did is, most companies wouldn't have any, any type of streaming service like this. You have to go to Kansas City, or you have to go to LA to get support. Anthony had enough vision that what he did is, is I'm gonna, I'm gonna design this, I'm gonna design it so we can bring it here, so we can service it. So all of the updates, all the upgrades, all of the content is right here, a couple of blocks, sitting in our offices, so no having to, you know, to, uh, go out in the area to get support. Backbone, uh, is proactively monitored, constantly monitored, um, we have, uh, really, uh, ten gig to a hundred gig. We just sold, um, a couple of months ago, um, two ten gig circuits to Martin Luther College in New Ulm. And, uh, really what we're proposing here is, is that when you look at our maps and you can look at the detail, and Chris is gonna come up and talk about that a little bit later, is, is that our intent is, is that when we come into a community, that we do the entire community. And that is exactly the path that we are starting hopefully in about a month. So the construction process is, uh, Mr. Wurzel knows this, uh, uh, better than anybody. Um, the work begins, um, what we're doing is not today, the work does not begin today, but it's been about a month until the frost gets out of the ground. And, uh, this is, this is actually one of the slides, I, I really wanted to keep it in here, because this was a presentation that we did to Matt about, uh, two months ago, Matt, right around in there. And what it was, was, you know, with the American Rescue Plan dollars coming out, and broadband being so high up in the, on the, on the, on the list for communities that wanted to be able to serve their constituency, is, is that we wanted to make sure that, you know, we were in place talking to the right people within the city um, about those opportunities, and, and certainly, um, we came out of that meeting, I think, with, with a great understanding between the two companies of, again, how we're going to proceed and what, how we're going to, in, in some cases, uh, business as usual, but in this case, we're gonna be here a lot longer, doing a lot more in a shorter period of time. So kind of, Chris's, uh, construction schedule here is on the timeline, you know, we notify people that we're coming in, do the site prep. Um, the fiber construction begins, uh, drop, uh, we call it drops, but what it is, is, is that is, um, just the drops that we put into the home. The thing that we're doing here is, is that if you take our service or you have our service as we're putting fiber, there's no charge. We will put that into your home at no charge. As we move down the road and maybe we go out of that neighborhood, and you want us to, you know, you want service to come to your house, after we've left, there will be a charge. We will charge you to make that installation. And then, you know, we'll get in, get it running, uh, and get your home up, uh, and installed. So, we are, um, investing, like I said, um, a, a lot of our dollars right now based on expansion, based on keeping the communities that we are in solid, at solid partners, and again, with the American Rescue Plan dollars and a lot of other dollars, border to border, that's more of a state, uh, uh, funding, uh, relationship that we have. We're gonna continue to move down the road, uh, with, with our partners here in Hutch. This is just our leadership team, I will, you know, Matt's actually got this presentation, so if you need any contact or you got any questions, um, Matt will have all of these kinds, you know, pass this information, and you can certainly contact, this is the leadership of our company. So you, uh, you'll be going right into the area that you need to ask any questions or get any detail, you'll be able to find, you know, you'll be able to find that, um, right off this page. That's it.
Thanks, Richard. Now, Mayor Council, one of the reasons I, I asked him to, to kind of come and speak with the councils, first off, to the public mills of the investment that's going on in, in the community along with, uh, you guys as elected officials, but I think even more importantly is that we're gonna see a lot of construction in town this year. And we may get a lot of questions, um, and I think so it's important for the public to realize, um, what's hopefully going on, that they're not calling us thinking it's a city project, even though we have plenty of our own projects going on, um, but I know they've got an map up here of the, the work that's planned, and I'm not sure if that was the the next step that you guys are gonna plan to take on, so.
Actually, this is, this is Chris, you know, Chris Wurzel, uh, who some of you know. Actually, this is, this is Chris, you know, Chris Wurzel, uh, who some of you know, uh, here locally. Um, this is, this is kind of what Chris is going to be jumping into and moving forward in the months ahead.
Yeah, so the map that we have here a little, is a little deceiving. Um, the green areas are, are really, um, some of the areas that we, right now, can say we only serve fiber. Um, and last year, um, I'm sure a lot of people seen, we, we did what we would call a cell tap downtown. And are continuing to work on that today. Um, this year, the build is going to be a lot fairer. Uh, any area shaded in blue is where we are planning right now uh, to build fiber this summer. Uh, so like the, the, what we call the north half of downtown, uh, meaning all the businesses. Um, and then Dale Street being the, you know, eastern line, um, everything west out of town. Um, and then, you know, some of the areas down there by Denver, Iowa and, and some of that, um, right now. The, the area that's shaded in orange, um, is, is what's to come. Now, we kind of have a tentative plan of how we want to do this, but it's ever changing. You know, so uh, like Richard said, by, by 2024, the goal is the entire town of Hutchinson will be done. So what does that mean? Um, you know, like I say, it changes, it changes um, a lot, kind of by need and, and, and whatnot. So kind of hard to say, you know, where we're going to go next, it's, you know, it's hard to say right now. But um, this year, what's shaded in blue, uh, will be built. Uh, so right now, we're field staking, um, everything, kind of getting a, a general layout of how we're going to do it. Uh, the next step would be talking to the tenant over here and begging for, for permission to go over above the city. Um, and getting permits. Um, everything will stay in rear easements. Um, you know, there will be new pet sets. Uh, the copper facility that's in the ground today will remain until we can completely one hundred percent out every fiber and we will abandon it. So unfortunately, for a, a, a little bit of period of time, you know, we will have two pet sets to abandon. That's not going to be the end game. As soon as fiber's on one hundred percent, we will abandon the copper. Okay, any questions or concerns?
So the orange area, you're, you'll be looking at 2024 somewhere in the summer.
Well, 2023, 2024, you know, um, and it changes, it, it changes. So that's future. And, and like I said, the, the maps will obviously, and we have a lot, we have a lot of fiber, we have a fiber network all over your town. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we can serve new fiber. So, um, yeah, it's going to be busy. It'll be, it'll be a busy summer, so. Last year was a little taste of it, uh, during downtown. I think it worked well.
I guess on that note, yeah, thanks, Navarro. This is, yeah, like, uh, was alluded to, this is a huge investment in the community. And uh, is a, is a great thing. Um, just some dynamics from last year. Chris is great to work with, doing a great job. You know, like you mentioned, we had plenty of conversations going into the, the work last year. Uh, you know, me and you worked pretty closely with, with John Olson and, and John Paulson to some degree. I, I think the one thing, as the scope of this continues to expand, is just stress, you know, the public relations, the outreach, the understanding. It was a little bit too in the presentation.
Yep.
You know, so people know, you know, what's going on and who's doing it.
Yep.
And having contact, information provided to them and, and well established, you know.
Yep.
Uh, staff, myself, we did take some arrows last year. There was some divots out there that weren't replaced in a timely manner. So we hope, you know, that can
Yep.
change this year, you know, there was some, some alley paving that didn't happen until, I think, November.
Yep.
So hopefully that's not the case. Uh, if it does become the case, whether it's a street, an alley, a boulevard, a yard, uh, you know, be communicating with those adjacent property owners as, you know, the lack of that restoration or the timeliness of that restoration occurs. And I guess it, it might entail some maintenance of those gravel spots in the roadway.
Yep.
The weedy spot in the boulevard that's all dirt and they don't, property owner doesn't want to mow it, but somebody should be pulling the weeds and that shouldn't necessarily get property owners interested, so.
Right.
Just wanted to stress that and
Oh, yeah.
if that's done, I, yeah, I think the other thing is, and you guys are well aware of this, uh, you know, we can oversee everything, make sure uh, the facilities, you know, going in the ground and remain in, in public right of ways and
Yep.
public easements by all means.
Yep. Um, a big, a big, you know, my main goals, uh, even pre-me, you know, uh, Hutchell, you know, and, and Almavere, I feel like we have a greater relationship with the city and a lot of the residents. And that's, that's the endgame here, we don't want it. You know, I, I, we serve other towns that other companies have came in, kind of made a mess and, and kind of created a name. And that's not at all what we want.
Yep.
You know, I want to make sure that everybody, you know, we want to remain in the, in the right life. And so, yeah.
And I realize you have contractors involved, we're no different.
Yep.
And so, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
A contractor may have a different idea of what, uh, you know, timely restoration.
That definitely be.
And so, but keep on.
Oh, for sure. And I think every year, I mean, we don't have, we don't have very many years to, to do this, but um, we'll learn, you know, you know, oversee one year.
You know, through our conversation two months ago, I said this would be a good opportunity to get it out to the public so they, they know and hopefully, you know, work some of those areas and communications that they have.
Yeah, the, the mailer should be going out shortly, Matt.
Sure.
And, and we'll, you know, we've got our press release done, we've got, you know, all the things that we need to do to cover right now for communication, it is ready to go.
It's also a good opportunity for the councilors to be aware of what's going on too.
And it's really, it's important for us because like Ri- Richard said, um, if you're a current customer, hands down, we'll bring it to you. If you're not, um, you know, we want to know upfront, hey, we, we want that, um, and then we'll bring it to you. So we definitely want to get notifications out there so that it's not, hey, we're two blocks down and now I need to go back. We want to get it there while we're working that block, so notifications.
Anything else?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Next is Public Works Annual Report.
Matt just wanted to wake everybody up.
It is a gloom and doom day, so. All right, we'll get started here. Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh, this evening, we're presenting our 2021 Hutchinson Public Works Annual Report. Uh, this is the condensed version that goes in the, is the overall uh, uh, city report that administration Melissa puts together over the next few months. So with that, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. Um, yeah, John, Tim and Eric are here also this evening to, to answer any questions. So we'll, you know, we'll maybe focus more so on uh, Q and A than uh, me reading this to you. So with that, uh, yeah, uh, Public Works, uh, our group consists of, of the eight, uh, you know, established city departments, there are engineering, streets and roadway, cemetery, airport, hats, facility, Hutchinson Area Transportation Services, water, wastewater and stormwater, the, uh, three enterprise funds at the end there. Core services, uh, yeah, as I mentioned every year, uh, this is our, our meat and potatoes. Uh, this really spells out, uh, what we do in, in Public Works. And uh, I think why we, we take a lot of pride in, in what we do and what we, uh, what we deliver on an annual basis and quite frankly, a day-to-day basis. Uh, essential services, uh, critical services, uh, that's more the, uh, the meat, I guess. And the, the right side, basic targeted services, uh, would be the potatoes. Uh, you know, the, the, uh, basic and targeted are more, you know, quality of life things, you know, to, to some degree. These are things maybe you could, you could live without, or maybe the city would have to be in the business of, of doing them. Uh, but uh, you know, from the city Hutchinson standpoint and, and some of these things over the, over the, uh, I guess, the course of many years, uh, they become a, a, not a critical, but a, a focus on that service. Uh, you know, obviously you look on that right side, we, we have an airport, you, you wouldn't have to have an airport. We have a cemetery, we might necessarily have to have a cemetery, but obviously we realize those are, those are a big deal uh, in the city Hutchinson. Then the bottom right, um, two things are noted there. Uh, the thirty FTE within our Public Works Group, that's uh, that's as high as I think we've been since probably oh nine-ish, you know, right, right after, after the recession played out and we had to make some cuts, uh, looking back. And then the, uh, the twenty-eight million or just short of twenty-eight million from an overall expenditure standpoint i- is definitely a high watermark on the Public Works front. Engineering, uh, that's myself overseeing our engineering group. Uh, you know, a variety of services and functions, roles, responsibilities on the left-hand side there. Uh, our workforce has remained relatively the same, you know, over the last fifteen, seventeen years for that matter, basically. Uh, with the exception being, being Jocelyn Jacobson. Uh, we were fortunate to get Josie from the DMV to a backfield Patrice Vanderveen's uh, position when she retired and Josie has done a great job and, and been quite the blessing to take on the, those responsibilities on an engineering administrative front. And like I noted, that, that twenty-eight million dollars number on the front, uh, a big chunk of that is, uh, the delivery of CIP infrastructure projects. Uh, we have them accounted for here in the engineering side of things. When, when in reality, you know, water, wastewater, uh, you know, the headworks and skater projects in particular, you know, they're, they're led up and, and delivered, managed by, by Tim and Eric respectively. You know, I do my part in, uh, bidding the project and blessing the plans and, uh, the consultant relationship and such. But at the end of the day, it's, it's Eric and Tim making those happen. Operations and maintenance, uh, this is Mr. Olson. Uh, John oversees, uh, the five departments listed here at the top of the page, a variety of services. You go back to the core services list, uh, you know, probably three quarter, quarters of them uh, fall into John's court, uh, just, uh, based on how our department is, is set up. Um, workforce wise, we're getting, uh, we're getting a little younger out in the streets department. That's, that's a good thing. Um, I think a testament of that is, you know, John's been kind of reinventing how we do street patching. Uh, we used to do a fair amount of contract street, uh, patching, you know, a lot of it's obviously seasonal driven uh, as you come into the spring months. Uh, with our younger, uh, operators, we've been, uh, fortunate enough to do a lot of that in-house the last couple of years and kind of reinvent how we do that. So that's a good thing that obviously, uh, saves the city money, especially these days when a lot of the paving contractors don't even want to touch that type of work because they can all get all sorts of roadway work. They don't want a monkey with the, filling potholes. Water, uh, this is, uh, Mr. Levine heads up our water group. Um, yeah, this is a very lean and mean group, but it's Eric and, uh, uh, Mike Lean and Jim Nevertravel, uh, and, uh, they both have been with us for some time. Um, yeah, Eric, uh, does what needs to be done on the water plant front and with the, the water towers. Uh, the, the big thing coming up is going to fall into Eric's court will be the meter replacement project that we're going to start to, to scope and look to de- develop and, uh, deliver in the near future. Wastewater, that's Mr. Grabkey over there. Uh, likewise, our workforce has been very stable, uh, on the wastewater front for a number of years. Uh, Tim, as of late, has been focusing a lot on projects, like I mentioned, the headworks project and the skater project. Um, yeah, and other than that, yeah, things are going well on the wastewater front. Uh, you know, we have a good staff. Uh, um, yeah, they, they know their roles and, uh, we're, we keep trying to maybe, you know, reinvent it a little bit as people become more, more, uh, experienced. So we'll keep looking to do that and, uh, yeah. I would say the grand plan is, uh, to keep good employees and keep challenging them and, uh, keep moving down the path. All right, 2021 accomplishments, the not yet, we got a lot done this year, uh, or last year. And, uh, yeah, I'm not going to read through this list, uh, you know, a lot of the, the major projects were, you know, the work, uh, done up here to the north, uh, in conjunction with the, uh, police, uh, station project. Uh, you know, we, we did the, uh, the work on the, uh, east side of the rec center tied to the, the pond project from a few years ago. Uh, the HOC system up on Highway seven. Uh, we fixed a, a problem child of a pond to some degree out in South Fork Ridge. Uh, water, talked a little bit about, well, I haven't mentioned, we've, we've done some work on well number seven up there. Uh, that's still playing out. And like I mentioned, uh, Tim's been leaving up, uh, the headworks project and the skater project, uh, along with a number of other things. Up here in this area in the upper right, uh, John's been, uh, administering, uh, quotes, I guess, with different, uh, contractors and suppliers to, to keep our sanitary sewer collection system up to speed. A little bit of storm sewer work, uh, that the engineering department did to, uh, help Creekside out last spring. Yeah, I think I mentioned this at council, we did re- remove, I guess, the, the sand and gravel bar uh, downstream of the, of the dam, uh, just to the east of the bridge. We did finally get that accomplished, uh, late last fall. I guess the big thing in this list, we did finish our Americans, uh, Disabilities Act Transition Plan with respect to sidewalk and, uh, trail infrastructure, which we obviously have a lot of in this community. And lastly, uh, we get into a few, like, relatively minor facility projects and, uh, some, uh, vehicles and equipments that was procured. Continuing on, yeah, this is more so what we're looking at going into, uh, 2022 here. Uh, I guess the big things that we're going to keep doing work on, the, the river and lakes improvement project, obviously tied to the state bonding dollars and starting to do that, uh, environmental assessment worksheet. Uh, we're going to continue on to the west side of the streets, west side of the rec center and address those streets, uh, and set up that drainage system to go into the new pond. Water, major items, like I've already mentioned, the skater project continues to play out on the water and wastewater side. Uh, we're looking at, uh, doing some different things, uh, with respect to our reverse osmosis concentrate. That's been somewhat problematic for a number of years. It's, it's basically the minerals and the salts that come out of, uh, our reverse osmosis system. No different than, you know, one of them you put in your home, you know, on your kitchen faucet or your refrigerator. Uh, the filter eventually fills up with mineral salts and you have to buy a new one. In our case, we don't want to be spending a million dollars on filters that often, so they get backwashed. And then that effluent, that concentrate needs to go into our sanitary sewer system, which then causes deposits immediately downstream within the sanitary sewer pipes. So, uh, we're, we're finally to a point where we, we think we have a solution to hopefully remedy that to some degree and not make that as problematic on our, on our sewer system. Heading down the list here, yeah, wastewater, you know, things on the headworks and, and skater projects. I will also continue, we're going to address the lift station up on Highway fifteen. I will also continue, we're gonna address the lift station up on Highway fifteen nor. Uh northwest of the roundabout on North High Drive. And we'll get into uh some sewer pipe lining and and such, uh. Like I mentioned, infrastructure maintenance wise, uh John does a great job. Like I mentioned, on the street patching, what staff is doing nowadays and what we're arriving at in-house, we're gonna continue. Uh to utilize uh the replay uh pavement preservation treatment out on our roadways. And then the last one listed here, streetlight conversion to L E D. Uh that was a project that was scoped by city staff here to be delivered over six, seven, eight years. Uh per conversations with with Hutch Utilities Convention con- Commission, that's going to now be delivered by them. So with their staff and their resources, so uh I guess the hope is that's more of a. Free year timeframe or so and uh. Basically, every streetlight or dang near every streetlight will be L E D in the community at that point. And with that, a few things at the airport, cemetery, hats uh respectively. You know, the hats project is tied to a state bonding request that uh. We are getting some good news on, it was included uh within the governor's list, we'll see what the uh. The House and Senate's uh bonding list look like here in the near future. Then as as usual, vehicles and equipment uh that are programmed to be uh purchased this year, this is a. Becoming uh somewhat problematic, uh especially on the truck front. And uh it's like everything else in the supply chain nowadays, you need to get your order in early. And uh that doesn't necessarily even mean you're gonna get a truck this year, so which we've learned in the last few weeks. And quickly, uh these are more, I guess, what I would call studies, funding. Administrative stuff from a public works standpoint, uh. We're gonna look to dig into this year, construction costs analysis, we know the prices are going up, um. We're really happy, we did our job, our our large street and utility job before uh the holidays for that matter. The prices people are seeing right now are are crazy out there. Other communities, cities and counties. Uh out this direction that I've been talking to and and Minda for that matter, it's it's uh. When you put something out for bids, it's a complete roll of the dice, uh. It's what's playing out in the uh the contracting environment. Uh hats, mention the state bonding request. Airport, there's also a state bonding request on the Civil Air Patrol Training Facility. They are proceeding with building the hangar portion of that project in the near future. They do have a construction bid in hand and will be starting to uh get that kicked off. Already mentioned the lakes and river improvements. Uh McLeod County, obviously, we work very closely with McLeod County, um. Things that continue to play out on the roundabout or at Airport Road and and Jefferson Street. Uh McLeod County is starting to scope a improvement project up on North High Drive. Uh namely to the east of the roundabout, so. That's a a roadway corridor we're very interested in from a utility service standpoint and. The potential that that could very well possibly be a city street in the the future, but that might be a ways away, but we need to. To look out for our our utilities up in that corridor. And lastly, the northeast ring road, uh that continues to be examined, studied by uh the county and their consultant. Water distribution, uh we have some work out at the Century Water Tower. Water meter replacements, mention that, and lastly. Yeah, I guess the big thing on the water wastewater front, which we've spoken quite a bit about is a. Rate study in the implement while the outreach and, you know, public input process, which has gone very well to this point. Staff has been been active with the industries as of late and uh. Things are starting to fall into place, so we'll keep doing that, looking to implement those. Those new rates and that rate structure in twenty twenty three. And then lastly, we're looking at um, we actually applied for a grant a few months ago. Which we just found out today that we uh didn't capture, but we're gonna continue to. Analyze uh really looking at our storm sewer system throughout the community. We we know where the problem areas are, you know, it's. You can fairly easily arrive at that when you get a heavy rainfall and you just travel about the community. Uh but I think the uh the caliber of storm events that are that are taking place and. You know, concerns with flooding uh relative to the the uptick in the in rainfall. Not so much frequency, but intensity, uh we want to do a study that basically. Somewhat from a, not quite a thirty thousand foot level, but uh somewhere in between the ground and that. It analyzes our system as a whole and really points out areas where we need to. Address or start to scope projects to improve the stormwater system. We have areas of town that have small pipes, basically twelve inch pipe after twelve inch pipe that becomes surcharged and. Become problematic, we have areas of town that have a lack lack of pondy, lack lack of capacity. You know, obviously, something like, uh you know, the south central drainage area in north of the rec center, you know, that took years to develop. And and model and ultimately deliver that project, so this is really the starting point of identifying those areas. And starting to develop improvements, really to account for the uh. The in- the intensity of these these rainfall events that uh everybody is seeing uh nowadays. Community survey, we we include this just for reference purposes, um. Nothing more than that, the last one that was administered, I believe, was twenty nineteen. That's at least what we have listed, so maybe there will be a another one coming in the not too distant future that uh. We improve our our score, our report card, I guess, on the street repair front. There were some dynamics going on, we did, we're coming out of a rough winter when this was administered, so, yeah, but anyways. Just wanna make note of that, pavement management program, yeah, this is a short one pager that John puts together that uh. You know, basically summarizes a fairly detailed and and lengthy report, we're we're doing well on this front, I guess. The one thing that's starting to maybe be of concern is the number of poor streets, the percentage. And it's not so much that we have a lot of bad asphalt out there, uh bad roadways, it's just that. You know, these are obviously beyond repair, even the marginal ones, which we don't have a whole lot of, or we're at least. Lower than the curve, you know, the targeted curve here, but uh. You know, the cost of addressing these streets, like I mentioned earlier, is is going up and going up substantially, so. We're gonna keep focusing on the the green, blue and. And yellow in the meantime, to keep the those roadways up at this end of the scale and keep. Keep those from falling into the marginal range, I mean, that's the best money you can spend on the roadway front nowadays. With that, I won't spend a lot of time, we want to include utility rates, um. This is uh E two S, a consultant that administers a utility rates survey on an annual basis. Uh they get a lot of the same communities to report every year. Uh we've been doing this since I've been here at the city and uh we have all these reports, we used to be. Way over here, not too many years ago, ten plus years ago where where Glencoe is now. And then, you know, Glencoe's had to make some uh fairly significant investments, especially on the on the wastewater treatment side of things. As of late and, you know, now we're getting more towards the middle, uh we're we're tracking, if you read. Uh you know, some of the explanation below, um. I think the the first sentence there really shows, you know, we've what we've accomplished in the last ten years. With keeping rates flat and as of as. Basically, the total utility bill, and this includes water, sewer and stormwater. Other community, well, this has really evolved on other communities or as from an average standpoint. From sixty one dollars a month to eighty five dollars a month, that's a thirty nine percent increase on average. Whereas over that same timeframe, we've gone up, you know, a couple of blocks, and that is purely on the stormwater front. So, yeah, and we're basically tracking from a total utility bill standpoint, right on average. At this point in time, and then then we get into the water, you know, water we're showing. About at the average line there. Likewise, for uh the wastewater, the sewer. And then stormwater, this is one that we've been talking about a little bit as of late, that we should probably begin. Looking at escalating those rates and we made some substantial investments. Obviously, down by the rec center with the pond and the the corresponding uh trunk uh pipe system. That uh is necessary to convey water into that pond, so it from a hydraulic standpoint, functions or. Functions up to the capacity that it's built to uh perform, uh with that. Operations also that are funded by the stormwater utility are becoming more costly. And uh one of the big operations that is funded by this. This fund is the leaf vacuuming service, uh you know, that comes at no cost to the residents. But it does sort of a bit of a handicap on this fund as that equipment. And such to perform that service becomes more costly. So, we're gonna be doing some research, staff is going to be uh can. Doing some surveying of compare regional cities first and foremost, but also. Comparable river slash lake communities where your stormwater utility. Says your storm sewer system and pondings supported by your stormwater utility should be a priority. To keep sediment and pollutants and such out of your, you know, your adjacent water bodies. And with that, the last few slides are just some breakdowns that uh help us chart and track uh. Where we spend our dollars from a staffing standpoint across public works and this is really just to gauge uh. Where that's going over the uh course of time. And that's all I have on that front, like I said, uh gentlemen over here, you're also, if you got any questions for them or myself.
I have one question for you, Kent. Concerning the water towers, do they get cleaned, you know, I. If I'm out walking, I notice that South Park, that that tower is really dirty.
Yes, that's something, yeah, we've been talking about as of late and and yeah, we we actually, we do have a. As part of the the work that we're gonna be administering on the Century Avenue Tower that I alluded to earlier. Part of that contract is to do a cleaning on the other towers this year, since we have, you know. People that go up on the, they have to clean the Century Tower anyways, so we're gonna have them pick up the other two.
Right, how often do we do that, do you know?
He- historically, not very often, you know, I've. Water towers have generally been pretty dirty, you know, uh it it costs about, what about five? Yeah, so it's, it's not cheap to clean a clean a tower, that's for all, correct?
Well, that's the normal price that we're getting, the deal we're giving is ten thousand.
There you go, yeah, excuse me, so yeah, ten thousand, give or take, yeah, we have some economies of scale since we're tying the other two to.
Right.
The century work.
I just noticed that, you know, it's gotten worse as the years go by and now it really looks bad.
That's one of those projects we can have a have a community do as a service project.
Yeah, I think the other thing we've talked about is, you know, ultimately, when uh we do a recoding, exterior recoding project. We might change our painting convention and our, you know, maybe go to the new logo as far as uh. Know what's up on the tower, so and why I say that is, you've seen a lot of communities, they'll have. You know, basically, the the upper two thirds of the the bowl, the the bulb will be. You know, maybe a cream color or or white for that matter with their logo on it, and then the bottom two thirds. Is or the bottom one thirty, excuse me, might might be a dark blue or a black. And what that does is obviously, that's where, you know, the mildew and the dust seem to accumulate is, you know, that's. You just, that's where the moisture is over time, because a tower isn't full. So the condensation isn't on the top, because the tower is generally only about half full. So the condensation's on the bottom and that's why that collects the dust and the mildew on the bottom.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
As long as you're still up there and Mary brought up water tower, that, how about street sweeping, when you guys gonna do that, John? I was asked, I said that, well, you know, that's good, I said, I got counsel tonight, so.
What what day is it today, Tuesday? It it started yesterday. So we're we've been out already, um we'll keep at it uh until we get through. Spring sweeping, uh our goal is to get through all of the city streets. Um center line and curb line, both, um that takes roughly. Anywhere between three to four weeks, depending on the weather. Um and that's that's the first thing that we do, that's very slow work, um curb. Curb speed is oftentimes two to three miles an hour because we're picking up, you know. All winter's worth of stuff and then uh um we usually bring a truck along with them. Or stage it so that we can continually sweep uh during the day, so. That has already started, it will be um in full bore mode here and uh for the next month. Until we get through everything, so.
The bikers will like you for that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else for Kent? Thanks, Kent.
Thank you much, just wanna thank staff again, we have a, and John and I talk about this quite a bit, we've been here a while, working side by side for. For many years and we have a great staff, public works, bottom, maybe almost to the top, but. It's uh with, it's amazing what we're able to to produce, administer, deliver. You know, with with our staff nowadays, so just wanna thank everybody involved in our operations, thank you much.
Thanks, Kent.
Uh we do not have any unfinished business, new business, uh resolution number one five four three seven, resolution. Of the city of Hutchinson, Minnesota, reestablishing the boundaries of election proof. Precincts, precincts, you know, sometimes I just stumble in establishing polling place locations.
Motion to approve. Need to explain it first. Because it's it's actually gonna be a pretty drastic change for the way Hutchinson voters are are used to voting. Um so our precinct boundaries didn't change, but how we administer um. Voting unfortunately is gonna have to change, um and we're, I would say, probably being forced by the state to do that, um. So, we've always had three precincts, or at least in recent history, we've had three precincts in town. Um that will stay the same and we've always just voted at the the rec center. Uh we actually got noticed last year at last election that our precinct was too big and is actually one of the biggest precincts in the entire state. And so they've asked us to, um I guess, break that up and so. Um we're gonna be having three polling places um come elections that will begin this August. And those three locations, um and you can see on the map, it's on the screen, precinct three will continue to meet at the. The rec center, um precinct two, which is most of the northwest. Portion of the the city will be meeting, uh will be voting at Days Inn. Um and I believe we're. Pretty much certain that precinct one, which is the eastern half of town, will be voting at Ridgeway College. Um and so that's um. So that's part of the action is the, obviously, acknowledge the precincts, like I said, which happens to change, but now we have to have three different um polling places. Um and that's mainly due to the the size of the precincts, so. But now we have to have three different um polling places, um and that's mainly due to the the size of the precincts, so.
And you're gonna have to have more people running those precincts too.
It's the same amount of judges. They're just.
Do you still have enough judges? Okay. They'll just have to find their new home.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, and obviously we're still a couple of months away from elections and we're gonna have to do a lot of press, but I guarantee you. We're sending a lot of people away from the rec center, but um trying to get that out now that those those polling locations will be changing, so.
All right, Pat.
Motion to approve a resolution one five four three seven.
I will second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary, to approve any other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, carry. Thanks, uh governance, uh we have the library board minutes from January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty two. Public Arts Commission minutes from February ninth, two thousand twenty two. The city of Hutchinson, financial report and investment report for February of two thousand twenty two. Uh Chief Jefferson, do you have anything for us tonight? Eric?
Well, don't argue about it. Why do you guys get up here? So uh just wanted to mention that this Friday, the Public Works uh membership will be or team. Will be at the Tiger Path Career and I guess Knowledge and Career Fair. I guess for hires, so um Lynn from Parks comes up here and gets her pitch during the. The annual report, so I'll do it early too. Um we still have some spots to be to fill. Um namely, water wastewater doesn't get a lot of applications. I don't know why not, but um. We don't put people in, you know, dirty situations like that. There, we do have a lot of uh. Groundskeeping to do at the facilities and lift stations and stuff, so that's mainly what the the most uh. Bulk of the seasonal and temporary positions do.
Do you usually get?
Um normally we'll have an intern that kinda does some project related work within the departments. And then we each kinda need like a grass mower, gopher, helping hand. There's a lot of vacations. During that time, so there's less overall bodies at the plant, so just doing the day to day basic stuff. It's nice to have just somebody that can either run here or there, do routine little tasks or. You know, help out, like you say, just in a two person job, just kinda be a grunt, so um last year it kinda boosted the. The seasonal rates to kinda give uh a little bit of appetite for people. We do need people that are either seniors in high school or returning back from college. Um they do need to be eighteen or a have been graduated to do the work we do, so um. Anybody out there knows anybody who fits that category looking for a nice summer daytime employment? There you go, we're open to anybody, so.
Tim, does it float between John? I mean, it would be just at your?
Um sometimes we do borrow each other's, you know, for major cleanings of tanks or something, you know, borrow one or. Or maybe John will have somebody have to go with the the jetter truck or something and and help there, so um. But we do mainly kinda house them, like you say, we do have a lot of work landscaping and stuff that has to be done at each department, so. But there is a variety that could be done, so just wanted to throw that out there and like I said, we'll be over at the high school this Friday, so. Educating the young people about the great careers in public works.
Before you sit down, boys and girls can apply, right?
We always welcome the women and that is why I always drag Deb Paulson over there because she's my wow. My women of wastewater, so.
And by the way, we actually, the for the first time, our intern will be a male. We have had exclusively female. Interns up to this point, so this is kind of a shock to the system that uh that we'll have a male intern this year, but uh. No, I just encourage folks to think about it um a lot. It works really well for. Uh particularly for uh people that are engaged in other things in the community because we're on a pretty much a day schedule. For for those, um and then they pretty much have every weekend available to play ball and do other things that they wanna do, so. Um we're looking forward to it and Tim has done a great amount, a great job on this uh. You know, presentation that we'll be doing on Friday and then Sonia from our department also uh did quite a bit of work on it. And polled a bunch of younger people about, you know, what they wanna see, you know, how they wanna interact with with the information. And uh so it came up to be a pretty attractive um um layout that we'll have. And hopefully get people thinking about public works careers. I'm not gonna be here forever, I can guarantee you that, so. Um you know, it's it's good that we continue to have younger people um engage. And to uh take a look at these careers, so they're they're good jobs, they're um you know. Uh it's above and beyond just the job. Um you're contributing to the community. And uh that's an important thing for a lot of people, especially younger people, so we encourage that. Thanks.
Say, John, as long as you're up there, you wanna just kinda throw out kinda timeline for CAP hanger going up? There'll be, oh, when people start seeing dirt flying out there, there'll be.
Right, uh my my first guess is we probably uh. Uh the the bids were opened in in the first week, uh like I believe it was the eighth of March. And the bids came in a little bit higher than expected, like most bids have done lately. Uh but they felt, still fell within the budget that the that the CAP had for the hanger. It's a quite large hanger, it's very big. Um it will be set up with uh water sewer. Uh you know, fire suppression system, the whole thing. Um so even though it's only, it's not the whole. Project that they were hoping to do, they will still be using it as a as a place to bring people to train. Uh there's some uh hoops that need to be jumped through with uh. With CAP headquarters and also with uh MINDOT aeronautics. I would expect those will be uh playing out sometime in the um late May, mid to mid June timeframe. So construction on uh dirt moving would probably begin sometime after the fourth of July, I would expect. And the building be built um starting in the fall and probably over the winter. Uh is is kinda what we're anticipating at this time, so very good, yeah.
Great, thanks, John.
John, maybe quickly on the pothole front, obviously.
Sure.
During that season, we've uh you know, seen significant frost movement this year, so.
Sure, sure. Uh the best way to do it is if you do notice one, um um you know, just give us a call. At two, three, four, four, two, one, nine, and that will get you down to the public works desk. And uh just let us know where you saw it. Uh there's some options online to report a problem also. Uh we do have crews out, we've, we're on our second load uh already, um that we've been out patching. Um we anticipate quite a few more as as the frost continues to grow go out. Yeah, like Ken said, uh this year the ground moved a lot. Um we had a significant amount of uh. Uh water, uh main breaks and things like that a few weeks ago. Um kinda when the ground was uh moved as far as it did this year and it's starting to settle back down. Um we're not seeing anything right now, but it's a little early. Um we usually don't know. About the extent of frost damage until closer to the middle of April, so um we're keeping our eyes out. In the meantime, uh as we can, we're out uh patching uh potholes, so, okay.
Thanks, John. Ken?
Yes, just a couple of things, uh. I saw one fifteen, Airport Road and Jefferson, uh the the project county's administered. We did apply for a grant for that that roundabout. A highway safety improvement uh grant, uh basically matching the the city or the county's application for a half million dollars also. Uh the county received their grant amount, a half million dollars they were awarded. Uh we were not, I think uh it was a little bit of a stretch on the city's front. We 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 have some adjacent uh. I guess private property is next within the city limits, but we don't have a true leg of that intersection at this point in time, so. No surprise, we thought we had rolled the dice and uh but it it is a good thing the county uh received their five hundred thousand. At this point, uh uh the county is pushing their consultant to hopefully. Uh get things moving along and uh live with that project in twenty twenty three, so uh that's a good thing. And then uh if you, uh I guess our MINDOT's email list, I don't. Think there's been anything in the paper on this front, but MINDOT is administering a reconstruction project. Uh within the city of Kimball, south of hit fifty five uh to the south end of town. And that's starting in April, so uh it's gonna be a significant detour. Uh they're saying April to July at this point. So uh the detour is lengthy. They're gonna pull you off if you're coming from the south here, off at twenty four. Take you over County Road seventeen and then back up to fifty five, so you'll get quite the tour if you decide to utilize. Yeah, just wanted to make mention of that, obviously, uh April's fast approaching. I all I know is April, so uh yeah. That'll be coming soon. That's it.
Thanks, Ken. Mark?
I don't have anything else tonight.
Yeah, let's start with you.
All right, well, I'm looking out the window and we got snow coming down, but we got, and I know Gary, you don't wanna hear that. Be careful, cause it's gonna be slippery, probably, and uh.
Exactly.
Something I always say, shop local.
So maybe you wanna make sure that the fire hydrant's for.
Yeah, mine's clean, I got one.
Just had a stir in the pot a little bit.
Yeah, I just stirred the pot.
Uh I don't have anything. I appreciate the uh explanation of the tort. And uh not sure I understand what they call it a tort yet today, but uh it'll be what it is, so.
It's nothing to do with desserts.
That's all I got.
All right, Mary?
Um just thanks to the Parks and Rec Department for doing the tree in the park. It's lit and it looks very nice, so. Thank you to all those that helped do that. And I hope you all put your snow shovels away because mine is packed away. I'm not taking it out again. That's it.
Thanks, Mary. Man?
Um at least for, I guess, Gary and Mary, we do have M P negotiations on Monday, Monday morning, nine. Um and then if any of you are interested, the League Minnesota Cities has sent out a disnotification of their annual conference. It's the end of June in Duluth this year. Um and so if you're interested in, I guess, kinda hearing what's going on, local government. Um so it's always a good, uh I guess, resource for uh some some education and for some networking. Um if you're interested in attending, just kinda let me know and we can talk about how to, like, how to get hooked up on that, so always that's it.
Thanks, man. Oh, I know we run ahead on time, so just to remind people that uh. Check your smoke detectors and your seal detectors. That's the time of year to do it, so if you haven't, please do it. Um and we do, we're going to have an opening on the Police Commission coming up. Uh Tom Brandl is going off, so um I had uh Liz Chaney. Put her application in, so um she'll uh talk to Chief Jefferson, he kinda gave me the blessing on it, so. Um if it'd be all right with the rest of you, I'd like to put her on the police commission.
I don't have an issue with that.
All right, ready?
I'll let on a future council adjourned then.
With that, let's go home before we get snowed in. I'll second. Second by myself to adjourn, all in favor? Those carried. Thanks, everyone.